Good evening. The Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting for Monday, May 9, 2022, will now come to order. And will the Clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Linda Cohen.
Here.
Anita Lucky, present. Jay Hesby.
Here.
Heidi Kater.
Here.
Milan Sahoney.
Present.
Cheryl Pozine.
Here.
Dr. Chase Anderson is absent today. Dr. Nate Flansborough.
Present.
Sarah Johansson.
Present. All right. Thank you very much, and welcome, everyone. I have a couple notes before we begin our regular meeting. First, Dr. Anderson is not in attendance this evening as he is out of state tending for a family member's medical needs, and we keep him and his family in our thoughts as we gather tonight. A second heads up, we, as May is a very busy month with many great things happening all around, we are running concurrently with our senior awards ceremony. And so, one, we're going to try to get some people who need to be at both things back together, but second of all, they took the livestream, and so we hope that some of their family members are being able to watch them receive the awards. So we are not livestreaming this meeting, but we are recording it, and it will be available tomorrow on our Facebook channels as normal. It's just not happening concurrently so that our seniors can be celebrated this evening. So thanks for your understanding with that. So the first item on our agenda, now that we're back to our agenda, is the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda items. Please remember that consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event that item will be removed from the consent agenda and addressed. The consent agenda items are listed in the board packet, and the recommended action is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda items. Is there a motion to that effect?
Don't move. Second.
All right. It's been moved in second, and there's no discussion. It's a roll call vote.
Cheryl Pozine.
Yes.
Milan Sahoney.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Jay Hesby.
Yes.
Heidi Kater.
Yes.
Anita Lucky, yes. Sarah Johansson.
Yes. All right. Very good. We have an agenda. And now, the first item on our agenda is reports from organizations. So from the theater floor to the boardroom, I would like to welcome Anna, who will come to give us an update about the student council. You can head up to the podium and the microphone.
All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Anna Volendorf, and I am the Junior Secretary on Student Council. Ramira asked me to step in today, and she couldn't be here because of Senior Awards Night. So I'm very happy to be with you all tonight, and here are some updates that are happening at the high school right now. So we are currently in the midst of our Senate elections, so anybody on the student body can run for Senate, which we have a student council house as a whole, but the Senate is a 20, or no, 35 elected voting body that will pass motions through the Constitution that we follow at Wayzata High School. So anyone can apply, all grades, but you have to get recommended by two teachers in order to pass through, and then further voting. So it's not like we just put anyone on. There is another electing process, but that's happening. Campaigning starts next week, and applications are due this Friday. Another thing we have going on is prom this Saturday, May 14, at International Market Square, from 8:00 p.m. to 11:30, I think. The theme is Secret Garden, and it's very fun. We have a decorator photo booth coming. We got all the food set out or ordered and everything, so very excited. And I know we sold, as of today, I got the final, close to approximate final count, about 1,200, so 1,200 tickets, so it'll be a very successful prom. Athletic updates in the school. I touched base with them this week, and they're kind of making up for lost time due to weather, but the playoffs are underway for all teams, so that's exciting. Theater Department, Big Love, the show, The Spring Play just closed. I actually just came from the striking the set, so, but yeah, that's over. And then AP testing, over 2,500 AP tests administered on the 1st of May. And that keeps going throughout this next few weeks here, so that's all my updates.
All right. Thanks so much. Hang out for a minute. We'll see if board members have any comments or questions. Any comments or questions? I will just say again, congratulations on Big Love. It was a wonderful performance.
Thank you.
So much. All right. And be safe and smart at the prom this weekend.
Thank you.
Always a mom.
Like a mom, yes.
All right. And next, we will move to recognition, so I'll join Dr. Flansburgh down at the podium.
Well, good evening, and thank you, everyone, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're so grateful you could join us this evening in attendance on what is an absolutely beautiful spring evening in Minnesota. We begin with the organization of the National Center for Women and Information Technology and the 2022 Minnesota Aspirations in Computing Awards. The National Center for Women and Information Technology Award for Aspirations in Computing honors ninth through 12th grade women, gender queer, and non-binary students for their computing-related achievements and interests, and encourages them to pursue their passions. Award recipients are selected based on their aptitude and aspirations in technology and computing, as demonstrated by their computing expertise, computing-related activities, leadership experience, tenacity in the face of barriers to access, and plans for post-secondary education. We would like to begin with our student honorees. Shriya Srinivas was awarded top honors, and as I call you, come on up if you're here. If you are here. Was it, Shriya was awarded top honors in Minnesota as one of the, Shriya, thank you, as one of the 2022 Minnesota Aspirations in Computing Award State Winners. Additionally, she was selected for one of 18 paid summer technology internships offered by Minnesota Business Partners. We would also like to recognize Emma Zhang, received Minnesota's honorable mention, and Anya Katru and Wendy Meng were recognized as Minnesota's Rising Stars. We are so proud of these young people for their accomplishments and aspirations, and if any of them are here, we invite you to join us at the podium.
And Udra is, Udra is the teacher.
Yep, and Udra, please join us. This year, Wayzata High School Performing and Technology Teacher Udra Rudis was selected as the 2022 Minnesota Aspirations in Computing State Educator, honorable mention for her efforts to promote equity in computing. The NCWIT Aspirations in Computing Educator Award identifies exemplary formal and informal educators who play a pivotal role in encouraging ninth through 12th grade women, gender queer, and non-binary students to explore their interest in computing and technology. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
I would. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So I didn't really prepare anything, but I would like to say a few words. So, you know, when girls start out in technology in elementary school, it's, I should say, when kids start out, if you look at the kids who are interested in technology, it's 50/50, 50% girls, 50% boys. By the time they get up to high school, it drops. I've been teaching IT hardware for four years. My first year I taught it, there were this many girls in the class, zero. This year, I have two sections. Then I had one section that was kind of flailing. This year, I have two sections of the class, and in each section, and they're both pretty rich, one was like 29, 30 students, one was, my current one's like 26, 27, and in both cases, we had four students who were either identifying as female or non-binary. So the thing is, and these were through promotional efforts, so not only did I increase the number of female and non-binary students, but through those efforts, I increased the number of students taking a very practical class that teaches them how to build computers, fix them, how to like secure their home networks. I mean, these kids can go home and fix your computer. Like, you don't even have to pay a technician to do it. They can buy memory, tell you exactly what kind of memory they need, put it in your computer. So IT hardware, anybody has a high school kid, that's my little promotion plug. In programming, we have a little bit more, but it's still 25%. And then when these girls go out into the field, it's like more than, you know, if you look at who is quitting and leaving the field, higher percentage of women than men. So the reason I did want to mention that is because, number one, I am very grateful to this district and to you all and you for the support you give us, both in terms of supporting technology education, so we can have that at the high school and I can have a job, but also for the efforts you've put in toward equity, because that made me aware, whips up some of these things, and then I was able to take actions in my department and at the school, just to be, you know, furthering that in these terms. In some places, the way they do that is by mandating technology education, at least like one course per year, and as you consider things, I would consider this district doing the same, because it's very important. Girls get to high school, and they look at the class, and it's like, oh, it's all boys, I'm not going to take it. And when you mandate it, it kind of puts some pressure for them, and we have lots of different classes they could take, but it's so important, even if you're not going to be a programmer, to have that background in education. So thank you very much, all of you. I really appreciate your support.
I would like to invite Trish Hill to join us at the podium. Trish is the Administrative Professional at Oakwood Elementary. Trish has been a part of Oakwood School for 20 years. She knows all of the students, families, and staff that have walked through the doors and greets each one as part of her family. Trish goes above and beyond the duties of an administrative professional, as she is helping to sew a ripped jacket, spending time with a student who needs a positive connection during the day, or keeping a stuffed lizard in her desk so that students feel that his friend is being cared for at school. To students, she is known as Miss Trish or TT, and she does the morning announcements each day. Miss Trish's announcements include a quick trivia fact called "Did You Know?" When you're in the building, you will find past facts posted around the school. We would like to share some trivia about Miss Trish. Did you know that Trish has been at Oakwood, been the Oakwood Office Administrative Professional for 24 years? Did you know that Trish started in the district as a sixth-grade paraprofessional at Greenwood and then moved to the Science Center as the secretary? Did you know that Trish has two granddaughters that are students at Oakwood? Here's one of my favorite student quotes about Trish. How does Miss Trish know all of this stuff? I think that she is so smart and special, and she wants us to be smart and feel special, and that's why she shares all of these things with us. Thank you for all that you do each and every day for all of us. Trish is a treasure that cannot be replicated, and we are so lucky to have you at Oakwood. Congratulations.
I just want to say thank you to the board and everyone, and to my colleagues.
Tonight, we would like to recognize the following employees who announced their retirement
They're like family. I've been there for such a long time, and I've had many people, Cheryl, been through.
for the 2021-2022 school year. We would like to thank them for their years of service to Wayzata Public Schools and wish
And I just want to say, Oakwood is a very special, special place, because they just
them well in their future endeavors. Joyce Popple, if you are here, the Administrative Professional at Wayzata High School for 16
take the time to learn who those children are, and they become like your own family.
years of service, and David Moats, the English Language Arts Teacher from Wayzata High School
And that's, you guys are my family, so I thank you.
for 17 years of service. If you're here, we thank you. Are they in attendance? Well, regardless, thank you. Our final recognition, we are going to invite Michael Hagerty and Kelly Reagan from the Wayzata Education Fund with grant recipients to be shared. Please come to the podium.
So I'm joined by Kelly Reagan, Rhonda Holland, Julie Wessler, and Sheila Pryor. We are all members of the Wayzata Education Fund. For those of you who aren't unfamiliar with us, the Wayzata Education Fund is a nonprofit organization, all volunteer-run, that provides grant funding for innovative projects throughout the district. And we are in our, we were founded in 2003. We're supported by donations from Wayzata families, businesses. Through our two major fundraisers, the first one is the Thank a Teacher event that's going on currently, and the second one is the golf event that happens at the end of the summer, the Drive for Excellence. And it's through those fundraising efforts that we're able to provide the grants that we are going to announce tonight. So I will turn it over to Kelly to announce the award winners for this week, this year.
Thank you, Michael. We've got some really good ones every year. It's really interesting to see which ones we get, and we're so happy to be back here, as I'm assuming all of you are, after last year not being able to do this. So we're just going to kind of run through them quickly, because at the end, we do have the recipients of one of them that received it last week here, and so they're going to tell you a little bit about that, so we're going to try to keep it quick. First of all, Katie Frick received a grant for updates and maintenance of the outdoor ropes course for PE classes at the high school. Ken Pashina received a grant for a new, I have to read this one, new CNC plasma table used to cut metals for the metal manufacturing program also at the high school. We have nine total. Bill Skirberts received a grant for 150 graphing calculators, so that all math students can have access to the graphing calculators. We have Kyle Swanson, also at the high school, who received a grant for a rapid prototype 3D printer that can print wood filament for the wood manufacturing program also at the high school. Angela Henry and Michelle Hall received a grant for the necessary new licenses to Google Expedition Goggles and software for virtual 3D experiences at Northwoods Elementary in Sunset Hill. Interestingly enough, we provided the Google Expedition Goggles two years before, and then COVID hit, and the licensing expired, and so they came back to us to get the updates so the schools and the kids, those two schools and the kids could actually use those, so we were happy to fulfill that. Becky Whitlock at Gleason Lake received a grant for the purchase of diverse and inclusive books for each of the nine elementary schools and the media centers, so that one is a fun one, that expands all the elementary schools and the media centers. Robert Olson received a grant for the purchase of Drone Blocks Coating Drone Simulator for Sunset Hill Elementary School. Mary Shoal of Wayzata West received a grant for Day Planners for all the incoming sixth graders to help middle schoolers meet the challenges of starting middle school. And finally, Emily Hoak and Don Johnson received a grant for marketing and promotional materials for the new Wayzata Exploration Center at the high school. They are here tonight, along with a few of their students, to tell you a little bit more about the new Writing Exploration Center, and we're happy to have them here. Want to come on up? There you guys are. Congratulations.
Good evening. I'm Don Johnson. This is my colleague Emily Hall. We are both instructional coaches at the high school, and Emily leads the Academic Mentor Program, and I'm a compass instructor in our Graphic Communications Course. And these fine young ladies, along with another colleague who's not able to come tonight, worked on a project to create, to research and create a writing center that we have never had at the high school. And they promoted it and proposed it to administration, to which they responded, let's get it open tomorrow. So one of the things they found in their research was that promoting the writing center was key to getting students to using it, and so Emily and I applied for the grant to do that next year, but they would like to say a couple of words about their, what they put together.
Good evening. My name is Emma Lephardt. This is Harshini Gromkunda and Maimuna Anis, and we are the team who worked on creating a writing center for Wayzata High School. Our team is a part of the Compass Graphic Communications Class at Wayzata High School, where we were presented with multiple opportunities to expand our education with several unique opportunities. One of those tasks was creating a writing center for our high school. Through months of research, planning, and more emails than I have ever sent in my entire life, we created the Wayzata WECC, which stands for Writing Exploration Center. The center is located in the library and staffed through our Academic Mentor Program, which is available to students before, after, and during our study hall time, formerly known as our time. My team and I are incredibly grateful for this opportunity to expand our own horizons and are very excited to see the opportunities it will create in the halls of Wayzata. Thank you.
With that, we'd just like to conclude with our, oh, Vanna, over here, Julie, with our final check that we like to present to the school district, this year of over, just over $52,000 in grants that we've distributed to the district. Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity.
It is. And we've had a record fundraising year this year. It was really, really good. We've got some board members. We've got like, it's rocking. Yeah.
on the Ed Fund as a community member, and now as a school board member, and I just, this group is so inspiring. If you knew the amount of effort and work that goes into this, so I want to take a moment to thank the Ed Fund Board personally. Thank you, and on behalf of the school board as well. I just want to reiterate that this is such an incredible way to support the educators of the Wayzata School District. The community comes together in such a big way to give our teachers a pathway to be innovative, and innovative teachers give wings to our students. So a big thank you and a big congratulations to all the recipients this year. Thanks again.
So we're going to do a little on the fly. One of the awards that we were going to have this evening was the Scholastic Art Award, and because we're conflicting with the senior art awards, we moved it, but when we do some moving around, we're really sorry if there's some communication blocks. And so we have two wonderful students here that are here for a Scholastic Art Award, and since they are here, we will invite you to come back in June, but we will also recognize you now for your great accomplishments, just in case there's something else going on. So if you could come up, and why don't you tell us your name and what your award was?
My name is Abigail Wang, and I got a gold key for my drawing titled "Intrapersonal."
Wonderful. Thank you.
And I'm Elsa Gilbertson, and I got a silver key for one of my ceramic sculptures.
Well, thank you, girls. Hey, girls. Yeah, let's get a picture. Come on up. We'll get a picture. Yep. Come on up. And congratulations again, and we're so sorry about the mix-up. Well, again, congratulations, Abigail and Elsa. Thank you to the Wayzata Education Fund for your ongoing support and investment in our community. We will now move to the audience opportunity to address the board. This section of the agenda provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the school board. If you are here to address the school board and have not completed a form, I think I have just one at this moment, this is your time to complete your form and hand it over to Tammy, who is sitting at the table. Just a few notes about this portion of the meeting. Speakers who wish to provide input to the school board must complete this sign-up sheet and return it to our administrative specialist, Tammy, who is sitting at the table to the right. Please note that you will need to complete a request form in order to be included on the speaker list. When you are invited to the podium, please identify the subject or agenda items to which your comments pertain, and priority will be given to students and families with students currently enrolled in the district. The school board practices not to engage in discussion or debate with the speaker, but rather allow the speaker time to express their thoughts. Please present your comments in a respectful and professional manner. Vulgarity, references to, or inclusion of profanity or derogatory statements will be ruled out of order. Character abuse, specific complaints identifying staff, students, or named individuals in campaigning will not be permitted. Additionally, the school board chair will act to protect the due process and privacy rights of school district employees and students, and will act to limit or discontinue the input if such rights are violated. Personnel, student-related, or other matters which may involve data privacy concerns, preliminary allegations, or which may be potentially libelous or slanderous in nature shall not be considered in public, but shall be processed as determined by the school board in accordance with the governing law. The school board chair shall promptly rule out of order any discussion by any person that would violate these stated guidelines and all provisions of state or federal law, district policy, and the statutory rights of privacy for an individual. Finally, at no time should an audience member approach the board table. If you have information to share with the school board, please give it to Tammy at the table to the right. Anyone approaching the board table will be ruled out of order. This evening, each speaker will be invited to the podium to speak for three minutes with a maximum of Speakers who wish to provide input to the school board must complete this sign-up sheet and return it to our administrative specialist, Tammy, who is sitting at the table to the right. Please note that you will need to complete a request form in order to be included on the speaker list. When you are invited to the podium, please identify the subject or agenda items to which your comments pertain, and priority will be given to students and families with students currently enrolled in the district. The school board practices not to engage in discussion or debate with the speaker, but rather allow the speaker time to express their thoughts. Please present your comments in a respectful and professional manner. Vulgarity, references to, or inclusion of profanity or derogatory statements will be ruled out of order. Character abuse, specific complaints identifying staff, students, or named individuals in campaigning will not be permitted. Additionally, the school board chair will act to protect the due process and privacy rights of school district employees and students, and will act to limit or discontinue the input if such rights are violated. Personnel, student-related, or other matters which may involve data privacy concerns, preliminary allegations, or which may be potentially libelous or slanderous in nature shall not be considered in public, but shall be processed as determined by the school board in accordance with the governing law. The school board chair shall promptly rule out of order any discussion by any person that would violate these stated guidelines and all provisions of state or federal law, district policy, and the statutory rights of privacy for an individual. Finally, at no time should an audience member approach the board table. If you have information to share with the school board, please give it to Tammy at the table to the right. Anyone approaching the board table will be ruled out of order. This evening, each speaker will be invited to the podium to speak for three minutes with a maximum of one hour for public comment, and Tammy will help us to keep track of time. If you've already shared your thoughts with the school board, please consider letting someone new address the board. And if a community member shares a message similar to yours, please consider shortening your message or presenting as a group. All right. The time now is 7:35. And are there any, I have just one person that has completed a form. I'm wondering if there are any students? Nope. Okay. So we will call Cassie Calais. Kelly? Callis, I'm so sorry.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Cassie Callis. I have two sons enrolled at Northwoods Elementary, and they receive special education services there. I am here tonight to discuss with you my deep concerns regarding special education in the Wayzetta School District. The students in my son's program called the Specially Designed Classroom, or SDC, were moved to Northwoods when it opened. They were given two small interior classrooms, while regular spacious classrooms with windows sat empty waiting for future general education students. While kindergarten classes have their own bathroom, the students in the SDC do not. They are forced to pass through the halls with soiled diapers and clothing in front of their peers and receive diaper changes and toilet assistance in bathrooms with other general education students present. Students in the SDC are segregated at lunch and eat at separate lunch tables. They do not participate in recess at all with their general education peers. They do not go to specialist classes, music, art, recess, PE, or technology, nor do they have adaptive specials. These students are owed compensatory services for this. For at least two and a half years, students in the SDC were dismissed from school 25 minutes early because there was not adequate staffing until the end of the day. That's between 3,000 and 4,000 minutes of missed instruction time for each student. The students are also owed compensatory services for this. Students in the SDC have been unable to participate in field trips because they are inaccessible or inappropriate to students with disabilities. I ask you why the district is ignoring the research on the benefits of inclusion for neurotypical students as well as neurodivergent students? And what are we teaching students when we segregate students with disabilities? Why does Wayzetta continue to insist on 15 minutes per day or less of inclusion for the students in the SDC? I have had to fight for more than two years for my son to receive any more than that and to be included in specials. Why are students with disabilities not receiving an equitable education? Why aren't they going to specials? And would more staffing solve this problem? This year, in my son's program, there have been at least four dedicated, caring, high-caliber staff members, teachers and paraprofessionals, who have left this one program. I want to know why, and I want to know if creating a more supportive and collaborative environment for this staff and staffing the program adequately would solve this problem. This program was restructured again in March of 2022, resulting in fewer teachers and fewer paraprofessional supports. Why were the SDC students moved to Northwoods when their dignity cannot be preserved in this building? Why was paraprofessional support cut, and why were adapted specials eliminated? I have informed the district in emails and in meetings that students in the SDC are being discriminated against, and I have been thanked for my feedback. I am formally informing you now that students with disabilities are experiencing discrimination and are receiving unjust treatment due to their disabilities and inadequate staffing. The teachers and paraprofessionals in this program cannot be held accountable for the district's negligence in providing enough staff to ensure safety, the least restrictive environment, and a free and appropriate education for students with disabilities. I am requesting that you investigate my concerns, and I am providing you with documentation for your review. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you have anything to leave, you can leave it with Tammy. Okay. That is the only form I have received. Is there anyone else? Thank you. And that concludes our audience opportunity to address the board. There are no teaching and learning reports this evening, and there is not a superintendent report this evening. So I will now turn it over to our executive director of business and operation, finance and operations, I'm so sorry, DeeDee Karing.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Flansburgh. Tonight, we'll just briefly review our financial reports. There are no material changes from the last report for the previous month. There is just a slight increase in our capital expenditures, and this is due to irregular, irregular, excuse me, timing of LTFM or long-term facility maintenance projects. Those occur and overlap year to year. It does not mean that we're overspending. We're spending within our limits. It's just how the recording of that and will be addressed in subsequent year. So that is the only item, Madam Chair, that I have to bring forward to you. You all have had the reports in front of you previously.
Thank you. Thank you. So the first item are the monthly financial reports that are here. And are there any questions or comments? Thank you to the finance committee for continuing to follow up with that as well. Okay. Do you have, so on the agenda, we have District 287 LTFM.
Yes. Yep. Sorry. So the next item is the Intermediate School District 287 Long-Term Facility Maintenance for Fiscal Year 24. The 2015 legislature established a long-term facility maintenance program, which I just described, for school districts. It replaced the health and safety revenue, deferred maintenance revenue, and alternative facilities bonding and levy programs, beginning with fiscal year 2017. Annually, Intermediate School District 287, which we are a member of, must have a 10-year capital plan similar to what the school district of Wayzetta has, and it must be adopted by its board in each member school district. Intermediate 287 approves the levy a year in advance to accommodate several of its member districts who levy a year in advance. I want you to know that Wayzetta's portion of this is 13.5% of the total of $923,000 That's all of my report, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you. So board colleagues, the recommended action is to approve the Intermediate School District 287's Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Capital Expenditure Plan for Fiscal Years 2024 through 2033, and adopt the resolution affirming Wayzetta Public Schools' portion of the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 expenditures in the amount of $123,243 or $44?
It's 44. It's rounded up.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I so move.
It's been moved in second. And is there any discussion?
Madam Chair? This is a resolution. I'm sorry.
Oh, and thank you. And so would the maker of the motion agree to waive the reading of the resolution?
I do.
And does the maker of the second also agree?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So it's now been moved and seconded with the wave of the reading of the resolution. Thanks for that catch. Now, is there any discussion? All right. Hearing no discussion, it's a roll call vote.
Bonita Lucky? Yes. Cheryl Pozine?
Yes.
Mila and Sahoney?
Yes.
Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Jay Hesby?
Yes.
Heidi Cader?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes. Okay. And one more item, I think.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Flansburgh. At a previous meeting, we reviewed the athletic fee increases for the 22-23 school year. The district administration has reviewed the financial structure of all district programming during its cost containment, planning, and strategy for the 22-23 school year. It was determined by administration that increasing participation fees for athletics would be prudent and mitigate the impact of inflation on the overall athletic program of the district. Athletic fees have not been increased to reflect rising costs since 2015. The school board previously reviewed and discussed the proposals at the April 25 meeting, the school board work session, excuse me. A schedule of the administration's proposed increases are included in your packet. The total amount of the increase is about $25 to $30 per fee. The increases, as I mentioned earlier, has not occurred for eight years. With this increase in athletic fees, we would be at about the average for our other school districts. So we were a little bit below, and now we'll be on average with other school districts. As I mentioned earlier, it provides revenue. It's one of the only ways that school districts can increase revenue is through participation fees. And as we mentioned earlier, it's prudent to increase fees periodically so that you're keeping up not only with your competitors, but you're able to fund the programs. There are athletic scholarships for these fees to waive the fees for those children that are unable to pay for that. And we handle that within the athletic department. And with that, Madam Chair, we're requesting the increase in those fees.
Okay. Thank you. Board colleagues, the recommended action is to approve the district administration's proposed increases to athletic fees beginning with the 2022-2023 school year. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second. And is there any discussion?
Would just like to take a minute to say thank you for calling out that there are scholarships available, because I know for many families, this is going to be a small increase, but for many more, it's also a significant increase. So, you know, if there's any hardship for anybody who's here or listening, if there's any hardship, please make sure that you reach out because scholarships are available.
Again, any community members, we did have a more lengthy conversation about this at our board work session. I would like to thank the finance department and the athletic, and Megan Potter with the athletic department. We always try to observe the landscape and see what everyone else is doing, and we try to stay in that pack. I also remember in 2019 having this conversation, which then was put on hold in many things in 2020. So thank you for that. Any other? Okay. And this is a roll call vote, but no resolution.
Heidi Cader?
Yes.
Bonita Lucky?
Yes.
Cheryl Pozine?
Yes.
Mila and Sahoney?
Yes.
Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Jay Hesby?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And the motion carries. And so we move from finance to human resources, and I will turn it over to Stacy Voss, our executive director of human resources. Dr. Anderson leaves, and we like miss people and have microphones. And I tell you what, thank you, staff, for your flexibility.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I bring forward this evening an authorization of the health and hospitalization insurance rates for the 22-23 contract year. It is the recommendation of the insurance committee that the district remain with preferred one on a self-insured basis for the 22-23 contract year. The recommended renewal for the 22-23 plan year is a 4% increase to the premiums with no major plan design changes. I would like to thank the following members for their work on this important committee. Please note that all bargaining units are represented as we do this work because we feel that everyone's voices are extremely important, especially since we are self-insured. So a huge thank you to the teachers' union representatives of Cory Knutson, Anne Nauman, Jean Parsons, Dave Schultz, and Courtney Ramirez. For the administrative professionals and the paraprofessionals, we have Deneen Osgard. For the custodial staff, Ron Rogers. Principals, Ashley Farrington, Wayzetta Kids, Mindy Olsen. Food services, Marla Stahl. Unaffiliated, Leslie Byron and Tyler Reinart. Administration, DeeDee Karing. And then a special thanks to our benefits manager and committee chair, Joanne Feldsop, who pulls us all together and gets this very important work done. So the recommended action is before you.
All right. Thank you so much. The recommended action is to approve the recommendation of the insurance committee that the district remain with preferred one on a self-insured basis, with a rate renewal for the 2022-2023 plan year of 4% to be applied to both health insurance plans. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And are there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I just would like to echo the board's thanks to the insurance committee. And in addition to doing this, there's so much that that committee does to shepherd the health and well-being of all of our staff in the district. So thank you for your work on this and all things. This is not a roll call vote. So all in favor of approving the recommended action to, regarding the renewal, the rate renewal for the 2022-23 plan year of 4% to be applied to both health insurance plans, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Abstention. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Moving on to the next part of the work of the Health Insurance Committee is the authorization of our dental insurance rates for 22-23. The administration is recommending an overall 2% increase in funding for our self-insured Delta Dental Plan, and we are pleased to accomplish this without any plan design changes.
Okay. Thank you very much. The recommended action is to approve the recommendation that the district remain with Delta Dental on a self-insured basis and a rate renewal for the 2022-2023 plan year of 2% overall. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second. And is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the recommended action that the district remain with Delta Dental on a self-insured basis and a rate renewal for 22-23 of 2% overall, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Abstention. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Moving on, as we continue with changes within our health insurance, the district has received notice from FURTHER, its current third-party administrator, indicating they will no longer be providing services for health reimbursement accounts due to an acquisition by another provider. The district participated in a collaborative review of providers in coordination with other district benefit consultants, and has selected One Bridge Benefits to provide said services. One Bridge partners with Washington Trust Bank in administration and investments of these accounts. The attached resolution appoints One Bridge Benefits as third-party administrator and Washington Trust Bank as trustee for VIBA trust and health reimbursement arrangement plans.
Okay. Thank you. Board colleagues, the recommended action is to approve the attached resolution to, one, amend and restate the cafeteria plan currently administered by FURTHER onto the documents used by One Bridge Benefits Incorporated, who will be the successor administrator, subject to the district's reservation of the rights to develop its own plan information sheet with respect to such documents. And two, that this amendment and restatement is to be effective beginning July 1, 2022, and also be it resolved that the administration be authorized to take any actions necessary to facilitate this transition. Is there a motion to that effect?
I so move and ask that we waive the reading of the attached resolution.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? No. It's a resolution, so it's a roll call vote.
Jay Hesby?
Yes.
Heidi Cader?
Yes.
Bonita Lucky?
Yes.
Cheryl Pozine?
Yes.
Mila and Sahoney?
Yes.
Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously. And I should have said before, thank you for that work on that as well. That's a lot. And so it's nice to see that we've got a plan moving forward.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Moving away from insurance issues now, we're moving into staffing. And I bring forward this evening the resolution regarding termination and non-renewal of teaching contracts. The administration recommends the adoption of the attached resolution for the non-renewal of the teaching contracts of the listed probationary teachers before you.
Okay. So board colleagues, the recommended action is to adopt the resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contracts of the to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contracts of the named probationary teachers that is in your board packet. This is a resolution as well. Is there a motion to that effect?
I will move that and ask that we waive the reading of the resolution as well.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, it's a roll call vote.
Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Jay Hasby?
Yes.
Heidi Kater?
Yes.
Bonita Lucky?
Yes.
Cheryl Poseen?
Yes.
Milin Sahoney?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, yet again. The next resolution is in accordance with the unrequested leave-of-absence process, and we are proposing a resolution regarding the reduction of media specialist positions. The administration recommends the adoption of the attached resolution to change from full-time, 1.0 FTE, to part-time, .5 FTE, media specialist positions at each of our schools. This is due to the 22-23 budget reductions.
Okay, and the recommended action is to adopt the attached resolution to reduce and discontinue positions. This is a resolution, is there a motion to that effect?
I so move and waive the reading of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
We all know how challenging the last two years have been due to COVID. Probably the biggest impact it has had is on enrollment and the corresponding shortfall in revenues. I completely understand the need to deal with the $5.2 million budget shortfall and support efforts that are fair and equitable. It is my belief that the data provided by the administration and the recommended restructuring resulting from it serve the dual purpose of addressing the budget shortfall while not affecting the quality of education provided to all students in our school district. Moreover, my understanding is that the staff reductions are primarily through retirement and attrition, something that was a big part of my decision today. So I will therefore support the resolution.
All right, thank you, Dr. Sahoney. Is there any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, it's a roll call vote.
Milin Sahoney?
Yes.
Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Jay Hasby?
Yes.
Heidi Kater?
Yes.
Bonita Lucky?
Yes.
Cheryl Poseen?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The last agenda item that I have for this evening is moving forward into the resolution regarding the unrequested leave of absence. The administration recommends the adoption of the attached resolution for unrequested leave of absence of the following staff in accordance with the 21-23 master contract between the district and the Wayzata Education Association and pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 122A, .40, subdivision 10.
Okay, thank you. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution relating to the unrequested leave of absence of the named teacher. Is there a motion to that effect?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move the recommended action and waive the resolution reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? It's a roll call vote.
Cheryl Poseen?
Yes.
Milin Sahoney?
Yes.
Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Jay Hasby?
Yes.
Heidi Kater?
Yes.
Bonita Lucky?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. There's a lot happening in the Human Resources Department this time of year. Thank you, Ms. Voss, and thanks to Board colleagues for your work on that. We now, there's no other board action, so we'll move to board reports. Are there any board reports this evening? I just have one note very quickly. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and in the past few weeks, our community has recognized and honored our principals, our administrative professionals, our special education, our paraprofessionals, our early childhood staff, our school nurses, our bus drivers, our Wayzata Cafe staff, and our custodians. It is inspiring and heartwarming to see the efforts that you, our community, both in your personal actions and at the building level through the PTOs, through personal notes and other gestures that you make in regards to our staff members. We are so very fortunate to be in a community that places such value and respect on our educational professionals, and I would just like to say that the school board shares your gratitude for all our staff, and we want to take this moment to express our appreciation for you and joining our efforts to recognize our staff and also for everyone within our Wayzata community. Dr. Cohen?
I have a board report, so, but I want to second that, what you just read. I want to talk a minute about the Mentor Connection, which is run at the high school by two teachers, Amy Swenson and Amanda Layden, and I had the good fortune, and many of the students who are in that program report at this time of year and do a presentation. And I visited virtually three of those presentations, and I will say, from my observations, it gives students an extraordinary research experience. The three students I listened to were Michelle Cow, Shubhanji Gupta, and Parsa Talai. And they talked about, one talked about the Affordable Care Act, one about breast cancer and the chemistry, and another about depression. And the students followed research protocols so carefully, and I was very, very impressed with that. When they got to their statistical explanations, they left me a little behind, but nevertheless, I understood most of it, and I think we are very fortunate to have that opportunity for many of our students, and clearly, they will be our future scientists and researchers.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yes, I want to, I totally agree with Dr. Cohen there. I was also, I also attended some of these in person, and I also want to appreciate what Amanda Layden has done for that program, so thank you.
That is such an incredible program, and we hope to learn more too at a boardwork session coming forward, so. Okay, now, in my oversight, any more board reports? No. Okay, hearing none, this concludes our meeting for Monday, May 9, 2022. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, May 9, 2022, is adjourned.